This week?
Uh, yeah, I don't, uh, he's not gonna be here. He might log in or show up online.
Can you hand me his laptop thingy there?
Okay, Dave.
Thank you.
I got mine back. I'm so happy it got found. I, that drives me nuts. You know, I mean, I didn't pay for him, but it still drives me nuts.
What is your opinion on the last one?
New Day country. I don't know where staff is. Let me, uh, message Amy really quickly.
Okay, I'll hold off just till we find out what's going on with online. I picked up three bikes today.
Nice. Be the end of the month or not, or not until August or?
I think we have one.
July twenty second.
Yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
No.
Um, all right, next on the agenda, set the fiscal year twenty five property tax rate. Brandon?
Uh, so the, the grand list increased by nineteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars. The homestead tax rate increased from one point six six four six to one point eight zero seven three. Um, that's a fourteen cent increase. The no, the non-homestead tax rate increased from one point seven one seven nine to one point nine two seven one. Last year, each penny on the grand list was thirty three thousand two hundred and sixty six dollars and forty eight cents, and this year it's thirty three thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars and fifty one cents. The municipal tax rate in FY twenty five was point seventy eighty, and the municipal tax rate in FY twenty five will be point seven two zero six or, uh, one, uh, excuse me, zero point zero one two six higher than in FY twenty four, which is a one point seven five percent increase. Uh, when we developed the estimated tax rate for FY twenty five based on the FY twenty four grand list, we estimated a zero point zero one eight zero increase. When we estimated the municipal tax rate in FY twenty five based on the FY twenty four grand list, we estimated an eighteen dollar increase for a hundred thousand of property valuation without education taxes. Um, it came in at thirteen dollars, uh, per hundred thousand of property valuation. So just asking for a motion to set the FY twenty five property tax rate to point seven two zero six.
Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made in second. Uh, discussion on the motion. Motion is to set the municipal tax rate for fiscal year twenty five at point seven two zero six. This is only the municipal rate. This is, is not the education rate. Uh, discussion.
Can I ask some real beginner questions?
Well, certainly.
What is the, what does it mean last year each penny on the grand list? What, what does that mean?
Um, so each penny on the grand list, uh, so the municipal grand list is three million three hundred and forty six thousand four hundred and fifty one point sixty five. You divide that by a hundred, um, and you get the penny.
And what's the point of calculating it down to the penny? What does that do?
Well, that penny is that tax rate that we're talking about. That, that, when it's seventy two, let's say it's point seven two, that's seventy two cents.
Ah.
Okay?
Ah.
So if it was seventy three cents, it would be thirty three thousand dollars more that we are raising. That one cent, that's that one cent addition to the rate.
Got it. Each penny equals three.
Got it. Okay.
Okay?
Got it. Got it.
So that's what we're looking at.
So every thirty three thousand dollars you cut out of the budget, you're saving a penny.
On ta- on the tax rate?
Yes, that's when we do it, when we're doing the budget. That's how you figure it out.
So if you wanted to cut four cents from the tax rate, multiply thirty three or, well, what's gonna be?
Almost thirty four, not.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thirty three and a half cents now, right?
And each, each penny is roughly ten dollars, a ten dollar increase per a hundred thousand of property valuation. So every cent that you cut or add, you're either gaining ten dollars per hundred thousand or saving ten dollars per hundred thousand.
Dave, did you have a question or a point?
Well, I got a few, but, so I think, I don't think we should make the motion in a sum total. I think in the years past, we actually, if you skip down to the next page, page two of, maybe you didn't remember it. It says the fiscal twenty five tax rate, and you actually give a breakdown of exactly what that sum total, seven two zero six, is. So that, to Rika's point, when you look at, for instance, um, let's just take the first one, general fund. That would be the town office, that would be the police, that would be the fire services at forty point four zero two six. I think we, I think the motion should incorporate those in those, um, brackets to equal the sum total of seven two six. I think we've done that in the past, so it'll show that on your tax bill. And Rika, you, so when you asked about thirty four thousand dollars, when we throw these things around, just those of us that have been here for a long time, a penny this and a penny that, it's really a lot of money. It, it's not, it, it sounds like some cheap line, you know, a penny, but it's really not. Um, so the, my question about the grand list, uh, Brandon, may, it, it's not incorporated in here, but, um, I, maybe a little bit further down here, you, or maybe it's in here, I just didn't pick it up. Yeah, the very first, the very first, uh, sentence that you said the grand list rose point five nine percent. We were very nervous in the beginning about how the CLA would then alter the electric company's grand list number on the total, the big picture thing. And just to get you up to speed, Rika, the, we have a large power company in the town that pays a large tax bill. And by the common level of appraisal, which has lowered the valuations, the sum total of all of our towns, they plug that in a statewide system into the formula that they use, which has lowered their grand list. It dramatically affects us. And last year and the year before, what happened was any of the improvements made to the town, whether three houses got built or somebody's land use permit went through, all of that got reduced on that one single electric company's ability to lower their grand list number. This year, it looks like, now, we have good news. So my question to Brandon is, has the CLA been announced?
Yes. Um, they announced it, it was the same CLA that I gave you guys.
So it, it was like seventy two, wasn't it?
Yes, somewhere around there.
So I wonder, given this news that you dropped on us, where the grand list actually went up a bit, I wonder if the CLA actually went up for us because the total values of the town went up by point five nine.
It, it's based on the same CLA, so it was based on.
I can say, I don't think the CLA can change like that.
Seventy two point one eight percent.
Seventy what?
Seventy two point one eight percent is our CLA.
And that is not unchanged, or they haven't come out with it yet?
That's the CLA that our education tax rates were based on, um.
I see. So the, our, so for our focus, the, uh, power company used that?
Yes.
And that's how you plugged the number into the grand list?
Yep, and our company still decreased by a million. We were just able to offset it with.
Okay.
All the extra.
Rika, there's a, there's a limit on the CLA. It's, it's eighty or eighty five or eighty two?
Eighty five.
Eighty five.
Eighty five's a low.
So anything, anytime it drops below eighty five, that
Or if it's one fifteen.
That difference gets subtracted from their, um, their grand list total. And they only have to pay taxes on that new modified total.
The, the electric company?
Yes, it only happens to public utility companies. It's, it's in state law. You and I don't get that on our properties, but they get it on their public utility assessments.
I know.
Okay, so, yeah, uh, over, over a four-year period, what did we lose in a to- in total?
I think it was like four hundred and fifty thousand of actual cash dollars, somewhere around there. I'd have to go back.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say it was around four eighty, something closer to four eighty, but.
Now, I think, I know we're getting a bit off.
In tax dollars, not deductions, reductions of theirs. Four hundred and eighty thousand in tax dollars we lost in four years.
So that's about, just, just divide that by thirty four thousand, so we're talking about twelve cents or a little bit more. Thir- no, more than that.
Because the CLA fell below the, oh, the allowable limits.
Now, I think a couple of meetings ago, that, that John was sitting, John Arson was sitting over in the corner, and he said that when and if we ever get to a hundred, that that will also come back, and Velco's, um, grand list will go to the hundred rather than seventy two.
That, that's right.
So that will help any potential taxes.
Right, they'll only have from that four or five-year period their normal depreciation rate that they would be allowed. But you're right, all that other part comes back.
We'll catch up.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm guessing that part of this is also that, uh, no, 'cause this isn't the education. This has nothing to do with education right now. What we're talking about right now.
Oh, yeah, what we're talking about, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't got there yet.
The CLA does affect education taxes.
Right, yeah.
We're discussing right now.
Where I was gonna go would've been off base, so I'm, I'm not gonna go there.
Well, Steve, but the to- on sentence number one, so your total, and I think there's like a zero missing here because the, obviously, the town's value isn't three million dollars. It's, it's probably like three hundred million or three billion. There's sixteen hundred and fifty parcels, so I don't know. That, that's a little bit misleading because it's not, you know, you got a few more zeros there. But, so, but the total increase, uh, almost twenty thousand dollars is, you know, divide that by thirty four thousand, and that's positive. So I, I, I don't know who made the motion about accepting this property tax rate, but if, if that stands, I would amend the motion to incorporate those, one, two, three, four, five, the five different line items, uh, on page two, if it's acceptable. I, I would put forward that, or maybe, I don't know.
Um, uh, do I hear a second to the motion to amend the motion?
Tell me what we're amending again?
He's just amending the way that it's structured, rather than voting on it simply as a, as a, as one line, seventy two cents.
I'll make the motion to amend.
I just need a second. Dave already made the motion.
Oh, okay. One second.
So this is a motion to amend it so that it reads, general fund tax rate point three nine four two, uh, no, that would be, that would be twenty four. Where's twenty five? Oh, yeah, point four zero two six. County tax, uh, point zero zero seven four. General fund special articles, point zero six three. Highway fund, uh, point two nine five one, and local education, point zero nine two. Those would be the five, correct, Dave?
Double zero, zero zero nine two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, point zero zero nine two, thank you. That, those would be the five, correct, Dave?
Yes, and I think you might've skipped, so whoever's kicked the minutes, can you copy them directly? 'Cause you might've, maybe I heard wrong, but I think on a special article, you put zero.
Yeah, it was for double zero there too.
Right, that matters.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
Zero zero six three, yep.
Yeah, yeah, please, just, yeah, just copy it from the table.
Yep.
Thank you, Nikki, uh, and, and everybody else. Okay, so this is a vote to just amend the motion. Uh, uh, we have a, a motion in a second to amend. Um, all in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Uh, any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, it's unanimous. So the motion is now amended to accept the tax rates as separate, five separate items that total point seven two zero six. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Here, yeah, you certainly can.
Clarification. Um, so our total listed real value is three hundred and forty six million, seven hundred and eighty three thousand one hundred dollars. But our total municipal grand list is three million, three hundred and forty six thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars.
'Cause it's another formula based.
It's another formula. Um, but just to point out, for Dave's question, no, our value is not, isn't just a three million.
Well, we must have three million dollars worth of assets just as a town, just the town alone.
Probably.
Total listed value including cable, equipment, and inventory is, um, three hundred and fifty million.
Okay. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Thank you for that information, Brandon. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, it's unanimous. Um, the record should show that there is one member that is missing tonight, uh, Nathan McNaughton, uh, so it is a four to zero vote. Um, that takes care of that one. Uh, the next up, up is, uh, property tax due dates. Brandon, do you have a presentation for that?
Yeah, uh, August twenty first, twenty four, November twentieth, twenty four, February nineteenth, twenty five, May twenty first, twenty five.
I make a motion to change this to twenty fifty?
Second.
Everybody's like, wait, what just happened?
I seconded it.
It is. So we don't have to pay these for, like, another twenty-six years.
It's like, well, it's like nothing will be running for a while.
That is just, that is just a joke. That is not a real motion. I know you did. We're on the same team tonight, Dave, I get it. Do I hear a motion to set the, uh, the tax, uh, proposed quarterly tax payment due dates uh, for August twenty one, November twenty of twenty twenty four, February nineteen, and May twenty first of twenty twenty five? Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion?
You've checked these, Brandon, so that they're on a day that's like.
About a weekend.
Okay, yeah, I know. Okay, you've checked.
Last year it was August seventeenth, which was the third Thursday, and this year it's August twenty first, which is the third Wednesday.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
And the reason they did that is to give an extra day for inputting all the tax payments, 'cause doing it on a Thursday kinda gets us behind a little bit.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, it is unanimous. Four to zero. Um, set the fiscal year twenty five homestead late filing penalty.
Move to, move to, uh, uh, set the FY twenty five homestead late filing penalty to three percent.
Uh, Brandon, did you have a recommendation?
Yeah.
In here?
Three percent.
Three percent, okay, so that matches the recommendation. There it is, right there. My apologies, I did not have a chance to, to read into this thing. We're doing great. Uh, is there a second to the motion?
Can I just?
I gotta have a sec, gotta have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion?
Can you call and find out whether you've paid your homesteads yet? 'Cause I, I always mean to do it in January, and then it gets to the April, and I go, shit, I don't remember if I paid it or not. 'Cause it's all, you know, it's electronic now.
You don't, you don't pay that. That, that, that's.
Oh, right, filed, no, no.
That's a homestead filing.
The filing.
Yeah. You don't, you don't do that with your taxes, when you file your taxes?
Well, I, in, in, in the beginning, when I first moved up here, I didn't understand what that was all about. So now I try to do it first thing in January rather than, so, but this year I just got completely confused as to whether I'd filed it or not. Can I call them in someplace up at the state and say?
I, I think you.
As opposed, I don't call you guys here.
No, no, you don't, no, you, no, that isn't handled by us, that's handled by the state.
Right, okay, I'll get them up by.
State tax department. Um, I don't even know if that's on my Vermont tax, where you can look it up unless, uh, it, there, 'cause there is a Vermont tax website, but you have to set up your own credentials and stuff and log in. I don't know if that shows up there or not. Do you, Dave?
Yeah.
It, it does?
It does, and I think the filing deadline is something like February fifteenth or something like that, or there's, you can go on the Vermont Department of Taxes on the website, it'll, it'll say homestead filing.
February fifteenth?
I think it's February.
For file, for filing that?
For homestead.
I don't file it until I do my taxes. It goes with my taxes up until, I, April fifteenth.
Yeah, April fifteenth is the due date.
Okay.
The final date they'll accept it is October fifteenth.
The previous tax rate penalty has been up to eight percent. So, so this is.
Well, this isn't the same thing.
I think so. I think that.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think that this is a big step in a reduction. Two years ago, the board voted to be zero because there seems like a lot of controversy about it.
And it was eight percent then, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the board, I think, used ARPA funds to.
Yes.
That's correct.
So this, there is, there is, when you take eight percent of someone's tax bill, that's a significant home- homestead penalty. So it do- it doesn't cost, if you ask Suzanne, which I've talked to her about it before, it's not, it's not nothing. It doesn't cost zero to kind of fix that. There is a cost, and three percent is quite a significant reduction from eight. So I think that's, and the town actually lost income, right, Brandon, on that? Like, there was a pretty big hit.
Well, we didn't lose because we covered it with ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was thirteen thousand, basically.
But we don't have that anymore.
Right.
So. I don't think, I don't think you really need to have a lot together to do this. If you just throw a dart up and say that you filed it, you can amend your application. I think it's more of a matter that you should get that done in the state online. I don't think they're gonna.
Well, there's, uh, should we consider some sort of notice to go out with our tax bills? Didn't John come in and tell us that it, there's only, it's only like fifty or sixty, fifty-six or sixty percent of the people that are eligible for this, that are actually claiming it? So there's still like another thirty percent or forty percent of people out there that are, that are eligible for, uh, 'cause what this is really is, this homestead tax rate thing, is, is a, this applies to your, your education tax based on your income. So it helps reduce your tax liability by distributing it across the state. You, you see what I mean? Uh, my tax bill on, on my personal property goes down pretty well because of this, when I file it, based on my income. You know, that cuts my tax bill in half. So, you, you know, if, if there's.
I think that's in coordination with X sixty-eight. That's the income sensitivity thing. Um, I'm not sure how the homestead applies or doesn't apply to that, but I think there are deadlines.
Well, I think that, isn't that what this homestead filing is, though?
I don't know. I think everybody needs to, I think everybody's required to file one, and if you don't, you have to pay the penalty because you didn't do it. I think so.
What's the num- what's the?
Some people file a homestead and get zero of your, what you're talking about for education tax, 'cause you don't, 'cause it doesn't really apply to them, but they still have to file a homestead.
Right.
And if you don't file a homestead, you gotta pay the penalty. So.
Huh.
I think, I don't know.
Yes. Anyway, okay, so we do have a motion on the floor with a second to set the, um, late filing fee penalty to three percent. Uh, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, it is unanimous, four to zero.
Can you make sure that you put that up on the town website, Brandon? Because if people ask questions or something, at least it's like a notice, not like
Yes.
eight, it's three.
I'll do that.
Next up, this'll be the fun one. Set the transfer station rates. Brandon, you wanna present this? And, and do you have a recommendation? You have all these recommendations. Pick one, right?
So we gave the, or I gave a presentation in the last meeting. Um, that study is attached to this memo here. It's a bigger discussion with the full transfer station committee on what to do with the cumulative deficit. The cumulative deficit at the transfer station is a hundred and nine thousand dollars. We're estimating it's a hundred and nine thousand because we believe we'll add another twenty thousand to it at the end of fiscal year twenty four. Recycling, it's projected to cost sixty seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. We offset that with MSW, um, and C and D. So we charge more for those two items in order to absorb the sixty seven thousand dollars in the punch ticket fee. If we'd like to continue doing that, this year, there's a few different ways that we can approach it. Um, we could continue offering recycling for free. Um, and to do that, we could absorb it through a combination of increase in the permit sticker fee and increase in the punch ticket fee. So if we increase the permit sticker to sixty five dollars, um, that'll increase our fixed revenues and whether it's filled by twenty three thousand seven hundred dollars. Fifty-three ninety of which can offset our recycling program, thirty-one sixty of which can offset our fixed revenue expenses. The remaining fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty can be applied to our cumulative deficit this year in addition to the twelve thousand two hundred and fifty collected by increasing the punch ticket by, uh, by twenty-five cents. And then we'll work with Writing and West Windsor through our transfer station committee to determine how we're gonna reduce the other eighty-two thousand dollars. So that's one way to. So that's one way to to offset the recycling program and chip away at our cumulative deficit, bringing it down from one oh nine to eighty-two. Is there an issue with the?
My computer wasn't plugged into the wall, so it died, so I'm gonna.
Okay.
I don't know, it keeps making noises.
You want us to give you a second?
No, I think it's done making noises.
Okay.
Did you lose that?
No, as soon as I get back on Zoom, it's gonna.
Okay. I'll pause until we get back on.
Okay, it looked like you wanted to click restart, but it's already a hundred percent.
Okay.
What you don't wanna see is updating.
I ain't seen any of those things that spin like that. I've never known.
Yeah.
And this, this entire system's being swapped out prior to the next meeting. So these issues will be resolved. TCI has deemed that particular laptop insufficient um for our meetings. And then Vosha.
Working on updates, thirty percent. I cursed it.
Mi- Mike, can I ask Brandon a question?
Yes.
Uh, uh, yeah.
So has Redden and West Windsor seen this? Or been involved with this? Uh, page that you gave us, yeah, page one of two?
No.
They have not?
They haven't.
So this is outside of what, so they are, the way that this works is during budget season, they we coordinate on the allocation for the fixed costs. They put those in their budgets and they get approved at town meeting.
What is, what is the current punch ticket?
Four and a quarter.
It is four and a quarter now. Four and a quarter. Okay, I, I, just as a general concept for me, I'm not in favor of charging for recycling. I think by doing that, we will make people like me lazy and put stuff in the place that it doesn't belong, which is the landfill. I'm not okay with that.
But I think that's already happening on a scale that's actually higher than we 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 need, we want it to be.
No, no, no. But, well, I, here, one of these options are, is to charge for recycling.
Yes, I know.
And I'm just telling you that I'm not going to vote for that.
Okay.
And I gave you the reason, because when you go home and you not, obviously know that you have a whatever it is, whether it's a dollar or a punch, which is four and a quarter now for recycling, uh, however, whatever that means for a bag of those things, I'm gonna say to myself, it doesn't matter anymore. It's four and a quarter either way, so I don't care.
But what's happening, Dave, uh i- in reality is and and this is a bigger part of what we we really have to address. It, even if, no matter what we do, we have to address this. The recyclables um compactor is getting contaminated because people are not, they're putting stuff in there they're not supposed to, and we don't have enough staff. That was what was presented at the last meeting. That we we don't have enough staff to to actually, and and we talked about a few options there, but we we didn't make any decisions on anything. Uh, you know, we had some ideas.
Well, here's, here's what I'm learning.
Well, we also asked for some other, for for a, like a greater study to be done on on how we're doing things. Is that, are we doing it the right way? But what what's happening, when that, when that recycling bin gets contaminated, that ends up in MSW anyway. We, when, and we end up getting charged for it after the fact at a different rate.
And Sean Whalen hit the nail on the head at the town meeting when he said that the zero sort has some significant flaws.
It does. Yes, he, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Yes, he's right.
So. But I don't think the answer is charging for that, waiting for it to be contaminated and giving up anyway. I don't, I don't think that's the answer. So do, do, so the other towns don't know about this?
Don't know about the punch ticket increase?
Or the sticker fees?
So the sticker fees are determined, so each town pays an allocation, and then from there, they determine what their town's gonna pay for a sticker fee. West Windsor does it different. Reading does it different. Like every, everybody pays.
Sixty-five dollars, we'll say. Everyone pays sixty-five dollars and then the town can charge them seventy.
Well, the way that they, the way that it works is we say, alright, Reading, you're responsible, based on the formula, you're responsible for, let's say, thirty-five thousand. They did, they take that thirty-five thousand dollar number and they put it into their general fund budget, and then everybody gets a sticker. We do it a little bit differently because we charge per sticker. West Windsor has the same allocation, but I believe their sticker cost is a hundred dollars. And the goal of their sticker cost being a hundred dollars or seventy-five to a hundred dollars is to put the cost of using the transfer station on the user. Because their argument is that everybody doesn't use it. But half their population does or more, uh because it was voted on at town meeting in favor.
But but we have, it's a little bit different than what you said. Ours is every parcel gets a bill.
Yes.
West Windsor has many that are on curbside. That's why their sticker price is a hundred bucks. If we had that option, I guarantee you that our sticker would be a hundred bucks too, because we have an awful lot of people that have come up to me saying, why do I have to pay anything? Cause I don't go to the transfer station. Yep.
And and the more we raise it, the louder that's gonna get.
The louder it's gonna get. And rightfully so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Cause if, cause if, all things being equal, the users are using the system, and if you're a non-user, why, why do you have to pay for something you're not using? We own the facility, right? We own the land, we own the buildings. Do we, we own the skid steer? Not shared, right?
Nope.
The Weathersfield owns that, the equipment. Did, did Weathersfield alone buy the new compactor?
No, but it owns it.
It's not part of the debt that is accumulated up to a hun- it's not contributing, the payment of it is not contributing to the payment of the hundred and nine thousand?
So the debt is a fixed cost, so that goes into our fixed allocation formula. So let's say the the payment, I believe, is ten thousand a year, so that ten thousand per year goes into the fixed cost allocation, and each of the three towns pay a share based on the percentage that they're responsible for. Um, that was agreed on by all three towns.
This, this hundred and nine thousand dollars, Dave, is an accumulative deficit. It's accumulating over a period of time. It's about twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year over a period of time that's brought us here. And my, where I was gonna go is in looking at at this first scenario, a twenty-five cent increase and a fifteen dollar increase, or is it ten dollar increase, ten or fifteen dollar increase on the, on the sticker fee, we've done this before and at the end of the year ended up in the same place, still gone backwards, twenty thousand dollars.
We didn't go to this extent, though. Um, and these are based on.
Yeah, we only did the, like the.
These projections are are solid because what what happens is our hauler increases their costs on a calendar year, and we were budgeting on a fiscal year, so we weren't accounting for the six months of increase.
Which we talked about in the budget season last year.
Correct. So we addressed that. If you go to page nine in your packet, page nine shows you a twenty-two year history of the transfer station's net revenue expense.
Yeah, I calculated that today. We should actually be in the hole, two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Well, if you go back to two thousand and one and two thousand, so there's, there could be positives and negatives back there too.
I I did, you're just what you had sent me. I calculated what we get, what we lost and what we got. And we're still two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the hole.
Yeah, so probably back before two thousand and two, there were surpluses.
Yeah.
To get to where, yeah. So you can see in two thousand and two, it ended eighty-two thousand in the red. Um, but then in two thousand and twelve, it ended forty-seven thousand in the green. So it's. Which is interesting because in two thousand and twelve, it was forty-seven in the green, two thousand and fourteen, it was forty-three in the red. So it's, it's jumped around like this for twenty-two years.
So maybe we shouldn't do anything. Next year, it's gonna be good. I wish, I'm just.
The way that Springfield addresses this is they budget for a deficit in the general fund. So let's say you budget fifty thousand dollars in the general fund for a transfer station deficit, and you, you lend in the red twenty thousand like we are this year. They transfer that twenty thousand to the transfer station to make it zero, and they add twenty thousand to it next year in the following year's budget.
To keep the fifty thousand dollars floating.
Fifty floating. And then you can take that twenty thousand that it ended in the red, and then you can split it with the remit, with the other towns that are sharing the station.
That's nothing more than a secret add-on to the sticker fees that will upset the people that don't use the transfer station by putting something in the general fund they don't use.
Yeah, but it's their choice not to use it.
They can vote against it.
But but they have a curbside.
I have curbside in Springfield, but I also use the transfer station. I use both. Just personally, I like the transfer station, but I also like to throw some stuff away at curbside.
Alright, so let's, what about the other options that we have here? Let's talk about those. That's one option. What's the next one? To go to sixty with the sticker fee and four seventy-five on the punch ticket.
I think Dave was just, David, you said you ran into someone?
Yeah, I think we're getting the wool pulled over our eyes on this recycling thing. I think we should um uh leave the sti- I'm gonna vote to leave the sticker alone at fifty and to raise the punch tickets to five dollars. Because I ran into a young man that actually works at a paper plant in Clermont, and they're actually buying cardboard and paper. I think that Sean Whalen had the, had the right idea, and if we're con- getting contaminated on the recycling, we need to look that square in the eye and say that's not working on that way. We used to have a system where, we don't even have a bottle thing anymore for the Boy Scouts or whatever to go in there and get that. It's all getting thrown in the recycling, zero sort.
What we heard at the last meeting is that two people over there during the day is not enough to keep up with the recycling, the C and D, the metal, and the MSW.
We've talked about just not accepting C and D.
We've talked, we've talked about that too, yeah.
What cost would that be if we just said, I'm sorry, but if people wanna dress up, they need to go get a, a container?
But our, but our, our biggest deficit's not coming from C and D anymore, it's coming from recycling.
But you mentioned a few minutes ago, something totally different. You said that people are throwing their trash in there.
That's correct. It 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 doesn't take much, and it contaminates it, and then it's no longer recyclable, it goes into MSW. And we get paid, we get charged the fee for that. That comes back at us.
How do we know that construction isn't costing us money when you use the same punch ticket?
Well, it's, it's it doesn't seem to be the one that's, that that's causing the problem. C and D was something we'd looked at before. We started, and we started uh, what, we almost doubled the rates on it, right?
Yeah, we almost did, and I think August and I were going to the transfer station to basically do a study and um determine how many punches are being punched for C and D each day.
Yeah.
Um, Ruker and I could take that on now.
So Kelly's right, that it's the same ticket. It's a manual, it's a manual punch by the operators to determine whether or not they're.
But but we made that change in how C and D comes in. Remember before, David, it used to be somebody could drive up with a pickup truck, and that's all you're allowed to have now is a pickup truck. But it's supposed to be in a, bagged up, and and if it's not bagged up, the guys that are checking the, the, for the ticket punches, are supposed to look at it and say, well, okay, you could fill four bags, so that's four punches, cause it's a punch per bag. Or whatever it happens to be, you you know, based on their chart there. It gives them enough, we gave them a kind of a roadmap. That kind of straightened out a bit of what's going on with C and D, but it's all of the recycling itself that is that is turning up now, that's not being covered by the punch punches we're, that we're getting. That's the problem. You know, so we, we, somewhere, we've gotta come up with that money. Either we raise the sticker fee, or we raise the sticker fee in the ticket, the punch ticket, or we raise both. And that still doesn't even address with the, with the numbers that are here. It doesn't even address um, the, the discussion that started to come up about having more help over there. Another twenty hours, possibly fifteen to twenty hours of somebody over there handling that stuff. Is it possible to close off? Like if we hired a person for one day to do recycling and only do recycling on one day and not do the recycling on, on all the days that it's open? Or maybe it's two days that it's open or something, and not have recycling on the extra day or, or, I, I mean, there.
It's possible, it's possible to do that, and I think we look at those options. I sort of like raising the ticket, the punch ticket to five dollars and keeping the permit sticker at fifty dollars right now, because it's the fairest way um to deal with.
Does it raise the same revenue?
Yes, I just calculated it.
I knew that's what you were doing.
It, it does raise what we need to do, and the reason I like that option the best is because it, it applies the financial burden across all three towns um rather than temporarily fixing it by increasing the permit sticker this year.
I, I, I will say this, though. When it went to four and a quarter for me, cause it, this thing, I remember when this thing was, what was it, two dollars, dollar and a half a punch or something like that? Dollar a punch? It was pretty cheap, but so it's gone up quite a bit, and I, I understand it. Um, but the more it goes up, the more I think about, okay, what do I not need to put in the mainstream? What can I recycle, which I throw away for free? See, so now you, you start to get to that level where, okay, less stuff is going in mainstream, so you're paying, you're, you're getting, you're taking less punches because they're not showing up with it, and they're given, they're, they're giving it to us for nothing. That's, that's where you started to, so, I get it.
It is. It keeps the, it also keeps the variable, variable expenses and variable revenues separated, because if we increase the permit sticker, then we're offsetting a variable revenue, a variable expense with a fixed revenue.
Yep.
So you start mixing and mingling.
I got it. I get you. It's not a good idea.
And the permit sticker really should be fixed and not variable, cause it will jump around if.
Motion to move the, the FY twenty five permit sticker at fifty dollars and adjust the um punch fees to five dollars August first.
Do I hear second on the motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Um, I, I, for me, I'm, I'm fine with this, um, but I still wanna look into, cause there was quite a bit of conversation from Ray uh about the fact that, that, you know, the two guys over there is not enough to run the place and, 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 and have it operate efficiently, which may be costing us money in the long run.
And Mike, you asked me to calculate how much it would cost if we added an additional person. Um, so we currently have two employees at the transfer station. We have one employee that makes seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents an hour and works twenty-five hours per week. The total annual salary is twenty-two thousand, so that doesn't include FICA and all those other calculations that go into it. Um, and the operator makes twenty dollars and thirteen cents per hour, thirty hours per week, annual salary thirty-one thousand, plus seventy-five percent of a benefits package, cause twenty-five percent of that goes to the highway.
So at a, if I, I heard what you just said, at a bare minimum, uh twenty hours, seventeen fifty, I think, you eat up the increase you just added.
So if we add in an additional person at seventeen fifty an hour, twenty hours per week.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be roughly right around that twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollar number.
But it would be fixed. So it would have to be in the permit sticker, and that really should be shared by all three towns.
Okay, I see what, oh, I see.
If we look at doing that, that would be something I think we should discuss with the transfer station committee.
I agree.
And we should put it in the budget next year, um because that. And we should put it in the budget next year, um, because that twenty thousand would be.
So that is a different discussion, and we can have that later. Uh, and the motion on the floor now is to set the rates at fifty and five, correct, Dave?
Yes.
Um, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brandon, thank you for that information. And you can get that out to everybody if you if you would, in an email, would be awesome.
Okay.
Cuz that will be coming up at some point. But you you I think you're right, that's a fixed. And and I didn't think of that. That's fixed, you distribute that over the three towns and let everybody, as Dave had requested earlier, and I and I was gonna ask that same question. Have the other towns seen this and participated in it? I I know why they haven't yet, but that they would, so, right?
So I'll draft up a memo at this point, and I'll send it to the transfer station, uh, to the solid waste reps of each town. I'll copy Rika as our solid waste rep. And I think we'll trigger a transfer station committee meeting at this point.
Sure.
Explain what we just did. And then what we should should study and look at prior to the next budget.
Okay. That sounds good. I think. Thank you, Dave, for that. Uh, any other business?
I do.
Who's aye? Aye is Kelly. Okay.
I just got a couple things, like when I come in that once a month to do the signing of the warrants. If I have a question, I think everyone else should know what my question is. And I should know what everyone else's questions are. Because I'm coming in to sign something, and how do I know that everyone else is agreed to what the warrants are?
So I think we, when we talked about this, I would receive any questions. And if I don't receive any questions, then that means nobody has any questions on the warrants. And if I do receive questions, then I can share those questions with you.
Okay.
But I haven't received any questions.
And 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 the other way is this, any board member that has a question, ask your question of Brandon.
I do, yeah.
Yep, and and if you don't get your answer, you call me, and it'll be on the board. It'll be it'll be at the table. We'll just, you know, it's not, it's not going through any cracks. That that, fair enough?
No, it is. Um, I don't see it on here, but I know it's in my packet at the house. My second question is, I noticed that there's a lot of people, forty-some odd properties that are tax exempt. How does that affect us? And are they people that should be paying pa- taxes that aren't?
Forty properties that are tax exempt, did you see that from the four eleven?
Uh, whatever those pieces of paper were, it's I can't get it on here, so.
So that's that's the veterans exemption. So the town?
Well, that's all I know what that is.
Okay, so that's.
So do we have any people or businesses in town that don't pay taxes at all?
Uh, West Wethersfield Fire Department.
Well, I call them tax exempt.
Yep.
So all the other businesses and everyone else in town pays taxes?
Yes.
My last question, before we get to the warrants. I I was in touch with someone at Vermont, and I think we need to add to our personnel booklet, comp time. It can be done legally. I think any time that we give to people should be public knowledge and everyone should know what's going on. It's legal, I did check it out.
So.
We just have to decide how many hours we we're willing to give in a year.
Okay.
And that time gets to get carried over, too. There there are a lot of stipulations with it, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
This is for, just for employees?
Yes, yeah. I just think it should be in the personnel book. And if we're gonna give it, I think we should give it that way.
And that's one, isn't that personnel policy something that we had coming forward anyway at some point?
Yes.
So that that's just a, yeah, good.
That's it to warrants. Sorry.
So Amy's still recording on Sapa, so I'll still go up normal to everyone else, but my uh computer, I think maybe the charger or something's broken, so the the zooms. Zoom's done.
Yep.
We're pretty close to being there as well. Uh, and if we're on Sapa, people can still um go and see a recording of what what we do from here on out.
That was that computer's last leg.
Well, I don't know, maybe it's the charger's last leg.
You broke it. Uh, so i- is that it for uh other business? Any other business, anybody? Nope, okay. Um, the warrants?
Make a motion. Approve the warrants. General fund payroll eighteen thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Operating expenses eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Highway fund payroll nine thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Operating expenses nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Solid waste op uh payroll one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Operating expenses sixty-one, sorry. Op uh operating expenses twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Library payroll two thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. We have grants, FEMA, dry hydrant, for a total of forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Grand totals for payroll thirty-two thousand one hundred and one dollar and twenty-four cents. Operating expenses one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eleven dollars and twenty-two cents.
Do I hear a second for the motion? Do I hear a second for the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the warrants?
Yeah, I got my first one. On page two of five, under the general fund. Third one up from the bottom, Coda and Coda. What what is that? It's got Jay McGoon on it.
So that's an aid to residents in need. Motion that was approved.
Okay. My next question. How many do we, the cell phone, the phone bill that's on here, are those all cell phones?
I I had a feeling you were gonna ask this question. So this is the, so this is actually the reason why the warrant's on the select board agenda tonight. Because I had a feeling that question was gonna be asked. So Nemrick. When we we have our AT&T bill, and we split it between funds and different accounts and different departments, based on the department that has a cell phone bill. One cell phone was purchased, but the description but the description for all AT&T bills um duplicates. So you can't modify it for any particular line. So that that description duplicated across all AT&T bills for that, on the warrant only. It doesn't do that um in our bookkeeping system. So no, only one cell phone was purchased. But that's the number of accounts that it was split into.
So you have seven town cell phones?
Uh, we have one, two, three, four, five police departments. Wait a second.
Well, I counted eighteen, eight ATNTs, and one was seven hundred and fifty bucks. That was a phone purchase, so I just automatically took one off. I said, you must have seven phones then, no?
No, so there's, I believe there's two police department, uh, excuse me, three police department cell phones and then two Mi-Fis. Because their computers in their car require Wi-Fi signal. And we have to purchase uh and pay a monthly subscription for the for the Wi-Fi only, so it's it's called a Mi-Fi.
So how many cell phones do we pay for as tax people?
So we have one, two, three, four, five.
So there's yours.
Yep, mine, police chief, highway superintendent.
The other two police officers.
And the other two police officers. And then two Mi-Fis.
That was my last question.
Anybody else?
Yeah, you can't, you you picked up on this one?
Wow.
Okay, let me look at
Uh-oh.
Page. And I'll get there. Page four of five on the general fund. So it's twelve, I guess it's um twelve out of twenty-seven, or maybe it's thirteen out of twenty-seven? I don't know. Everybody there yet?
You sure it's not eighteen of twenty-seven, eighteen of thirty-three?
It's like, see?
Page four or five on the general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm looking up on the top thing when when it scrolls, it says.
Eighteen of thirty-three.
Okay, mine doesn't say that.
Yeah, I'm there.
Sorry.
Mine says something different, but that's okay. Everybody there?
Yeah.
How in the world are we paying for eight months' worth of land use all in one warrant? Because and 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 how in the world are we going back to November of twenty-three, eight months ago?
I I had the same concern. Um, their AP, they had some.
So what is this under, so I'm under.
Philly will be on a monthly basis going forward.
Windsor, yeah.
If you look, so I've sum total it up. I mean, the the reason why it should raise a giant red flag is it's thirty thousand five hundred dollars. I mean, I don't have a calculator here, but I got rough numbers. And to be on one warrant, it seems like way out of control.
I think it's been on another one, though.
Yeah, I and I'm probably, that's the, my next question was going, cuz I bet you that 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 there's been warrants that have had some land use. It it's had to in the last eight months.
But but these but these bills are from the town of Windsor. Okay, so this is the contracted services.
But it should be, but it should be.
It's not all of land use, Dave. It's just the contracted services.
It should be concerning to anybody to look at the dates here. I mean, clear back to November of twenty-three, it's July of twenty-four right now.
But it means we didn't get these bills back then.
We just received them.
Well, they're not on the ball then.
They were, they were, but they were projec- they were in our projections and they were budgeted, but.
Okay, that's a better help.
Yep, but we did not receive the bills. According to their AP personnel, we'll be receiving them on a monthly basis going forward. So I think their personnel was still getting adjusted to this agreement because she's billing us and rocking him in Bellows Falls. And there was a, there's a formula that needs to be used, and it it does need to be on a monthly basis.
Have you had a chance to look at these individually? I mean, we're talking significant monies. So, um, you know, I don't know what it is per hour. But the it's it's pretty different here to go from thirty-eight to fifty-six hundred. I mean, that's eighteen hundred dollars in one month.
That's because it's contracted services and it's, the contracted services may spend more time in one of the other contracted towns than they do in hours. So the so those bills will go up, they will fluctuate. It may be fifteen hours here this month, might be twenty-two here next month. So it's, the bills are gonna change.
I'm assuming that we're paying for the time spent here.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, if you take a look at what I just said, one month it was thirty-five hundred dollars, another month it's two thousand dollars more. I don't think we're paying for anybody else. I think that's a allocated money that's going here on an hourly basis for the month.
And and also the way that they do their finances is a little bit different because they pay out HSAs as well. They also excuse me, they also, there's five week months.
HSA being January of any year, January first.
Here, um, they do it a little differently over there, and it's a little bit larger. I think it's eighty-eight hundred.
The bottom line is, you have gone over these and you have asserted these numbers into the budget so that you're not gonna get a big fat surprise.
No, I'm not, I'm not surprised. These were entered into my projections that the board has seen, but we just, we hadn't received the bill, so.
And there was no charge for February?
No, that'll come next month.
Well, we've got November, December, January, and then it skips to March, April, May.
In June.
Can you say that?
And we've completed a performance evaluation on both of the excuse me. Sorry, I'm looking at February.
I don't think it's in here yet.
That's right.
Not in here.
It's February, not in here. I'll take a look at that and and get back to you by the next meeting.
The biggest concern I had would be, and I was hoping that it didn't, it didn't appear to overlap into financial years, that would be a really big problem. You know, to go over July first on a new year and and add up the the numbers from an old year. So, but you've just answered your question. You said it's all lined up into whatever the money goes into the budget.
Yes, it is.
Andy, the note that I just gave you, you wanna update him on that?
That we've, we've done performance evaluations?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. On the, in the, in the.
I don't wanna go into any more details of personnel.
Which is why I just slipped him a note, cuz I didn't know if I wanted to open my mouth on it at all.
Do it next meeting.
Okay.
So, in a gen- general sense, you you have an ongoing program to evaluate things in town?
Yes.
Whether whether it's the people that are that work for you technically?
Yes.
But that's kind of an annual thing that you have to do?
Yep, and sometimes we do them quarterly, depending on circumstances.
So um, just a couple things I wanna uh uh just put in your head while we're on warrants, because it does, warrants are budgets. One of, there's a couple things I've been talking to Brandon about. Um, I got a, first of all, I got a a message, an email from John today about um somebody's pay and the fact that they needed to perhaps see an increase.
John who?
Arison.
Arison.
And uh I did respond to him. Uh, I've been talking with Brandon. I have a concern, and I wanna share that with the board, that if you look at the town manager um salaries around us, we're we're just over about fifty, sixty percent of what they're making everywhere else. And my concern is that someday Brandon may decide to go somewhere else. I I hope he doesn't. We all want him to stay here. Um, it's not a money thing. He argues with me about this all the time. But if he does decide to move on, the cost of us replacing him is going to be sticker shock. It 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 will be forty, fifty, sixty, or possibly even more, a thousand dollars a year, that that will change. And I just think that that we we should be, have that on our minds as we head into this next budget. Brandon has given me a couple of things to present to you. I'm not ready to do that right now, uh, but I will. Um, and and they're they're good systems for him, and it's all he's asking for, but I think it, quite frankly, I'm sorry, it needs to be more. But that's just, that's my personal opinion, but I want the board to just be thinking about those things. And I want the people of the town to know uh that we have to be thinking and talking about those things, because as and I I've talked to a few other people about it, and one of the things I was, was said to me was, you you know, if all of a sudden it turns around like three or four years from now, and you've gotta go from eighty or ninety thousand to a hundred and forty thousand to replace somebody, they're gonna look at you and say, how did you miss that? And we can't miss that. We we have to recognize that the the potential for that is there, and and we just need to be on the right side of it, that's all. That's, so I just wanted to give that to you guys. I know that's a little bit outside of the warrant, but not you know, uh, I snuck it in there. Um, so we'll get to those discussions as we move ahead. Any further discussion on the warrants? Hearing none. All in favor of the warrant signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, any opposed? And any abstentions? Uh, hearing none, the motion carries, it is unanimous, and I believe that brings us to the adjournment. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And again, it is unanimous. Sorry, I know you don't wanna a big raise, but I'll get through. I I like what you've sent me. I I like those ideas, and we'll get into that stuff.
Olivia, just make sure Mike doesn't take the warrant.
Oh, I've got my eye on him.